Good evening. Thank you all for coming. We are the Eugene Planning Commission, and tonight we will be holding a public hearing on appeal of the hearings official decision approving a conditional use permit for Cathedral Park, its city file number CU-024, which includes the development of up to 172 units of controlled income and rent housing. We have three commissioners absent tonight, however, we have a quorum with four commissioners present. I'd like each of the commissioners to introduce themselves, and then I will take a few minutes, which actually might seem a little longer, to explain our role and how tonight's hearing will go. So my name is Kristin Taylor, and I'm currently the chair.
My name's John Borowski, and I'm the vice chair.
John Jaworski, Commissioner.
Stephen Baker, Commissioner.
So I'd like to take a moment to explain who the Planning Commission is and our role. We are unpaid volunteers appointed by the Eugene City Council to four-year terms on the commission. This commission often makes recommendations to the city council on legislative matters, such as plan amendments and adoption of new land use codes, land use regulations. We also hear appeals of decisions made by hearings officials similar to tonight's hearing. Tonight, we will be hearing an appeal of a decision made by the city's hearings official to approve the proposed development. The Planning Commission will make the final decision on this matter at the local level. But I want to be clear that we will not be making a decision tonight. We will hold additional meetings on Thursday later this week, and again on Monday, to deliberate after we've heard the testimony tonight before making our decision on the appeal. And I'm going to say it twice, so we are meeting Thursday, August 25th, from 11:30 to 2:30 here in Harris Hall for deliberations. And then again next Monday in the Slope Room at the atrium building at 99 West 10th Avenue, starting at 11:30. And that's if necessary, so the second deliberation will be held if needed. If there are any further appeals after our decision, they will go to the state Land Use Board of Appeals. Some of the terms we have to use are logistic, or legalistic and logistic, so I will try to explain the requirements in plain English as best I can. Since this is an appeal hearing, there are unique procedures which we are legally required to follow. The decision of the Planning Commission on this appeal is considered quasi-judicial, so we will use quasi-judicial format for this public hearing. In a nutshell, that means we have a certain order of speakers that we need to follow, and there are certain rules or criteria that our decision must be based upon. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive relevant testimony on the appeal before us. I want to remind everyone that your testimony must be directed towards the appeal issues and the approval criteria that the speaker believes to apply. No new evidence can be accepted by the Planning Commission, and we can only accept testimony related to evidence that is already in the record. What this means is that you should be testifying about the materials and information already presented to the hearings official in the first public hearing process, whether or not you think he made a mistake based on the evidence he had at the time and based on the exclusive approval criteria for this conditional use permit under controlled income and rent housing provisions in the 2002 version of the Eugene Code. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to staff. If you wish to speak and you have not already done so, please submit the form now, and they're on the back table, the green forms. And if you see anybody else come in throughout the evening, if somebody sees them or they sit down by you, ask them to fill out a green form, and then they can bring it up to staff, and staff will give it to us. Once the public hearing is open, speakers will be called in the following order: the applicant, and those in support of the application, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the application. I know commissioners have asked for more clarity on when it's appropriate to ask questions of the speakers. Staff has suggested that we should ask those questions at the end of each person's testimony. So when you come up to speak, if we do have questions at the end of your testimony, the Planning Commission will ask those questions then, so you can stay at the podium and answer the questions. At the end of all the testimony, staff will have a chance to respond, and commissioners will also have the opportunity to ask questions to staff. That will ensure that the applicant has the opportunity to address those comments as part of their final rebuttal. To be clear, under state law, the applicant has the burden of proof. That means that it is the applicant's job to demonstrate that they satisfy each and every approval criterion. It is not the opponent's job to prove that the applicant has failed to demonstrate compliance. Because the applicant has the burden of proof, they always get the chance to provide a final rebuttal or have the last word. I'm also supposed to remind everyone that the failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow the Planning Commission and parties to respond will preclude further appeal on this issue. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue also precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. In other words, now is your opportunity to raise issues as clearly as you can so that the city and other parties involved in this case can address them. Before we begin, the Eugene Code also requires that the Planning Commissioners disclose any conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, biases, or abstentions. In a quasi-judicial proceeding like this one, the parties are entitled to an impartial or neutral decision-maker. To ensure this fair consideration, the rules attempt to limit ex parte contacts or communications between a party and the decision-maker outside the public hearing process. Each Planning Commissioner must disclose and describe the substance of any communication they have had about the case outside the public process. The Planning Commissioners must also disclose any potential conflict of interest, that is, whether the decision they are about to make could or would result in a personal financial gain to themselves, their business, or a member of their household. Finally, a Planning Commissioner cannot participate if he or she is biased, that is, for whatever reason, he or she is incapable of rendering an objective decision in the case. Commissioner Nicoletto is not present tonight because she's a new employee at Shermer Satrie Group, so she has recused herself. And do any of the other commissioners have anything to disclose? Now, staff will provide a brief introduction before we begin testimony.
Thank you, Chair Taylor. I'm Gabe Flock, senior planner with the city of Eugene. As you mentioned, the subject of tonight's hearing is a conditional use permit proposal for controlled income and rent housing. The project's known as Cathedral Park. Their request includes up to 172 dwelling units, along with community building and various infrastructure for access, utilities, and parking. The project is located on the southerly undeveloped portion of the Rest Haven Memorial Cemetery property. It's an area of about 16 acres located west of Willamette Street, north and east of Brayburn Drive, and south of 39th Avenue. Up on the screen, you can see the most recent version of the applicant's conceptual site plans. It shows the proposed private street and the layout of dwellings and parking shown there. I won't go into great detail about the site plan, but the original staff report and hearings officials' decision discuss the various components and details of the proposal in pretty great detail. I do think it's important to note that the plans are very conceptual in nature, and that based on the hearings official's approval, that it essentially grants a fairly high degree of flexibility in the applicant's ability to modify or adjust the layout of the proposal based on phasing and a variety of other factors. But I did think that it would be helpful to have a visual representation if questions come up or any of those details are pertinent tonight. I've also placed a copy, a hard copy of the plans, at your places so that you can have those tonight and throughout deliberations if you need that. In this case, the history is somewhat unique, so again, the initial staff report and the hearings officials' decision go into a fairly in-depth discussion of that history. The application was originally submitted in 2002, and it was actually rejected by the city at that time due to conflicts with the underlying or existing cemetery conditional use permit. The applicant appealed that determination by the city to the state's Land Use Board of Appeals, and the Land Use Board of Appeals then remanded the decision back to the city for processing. It wasn't until earlier this year in May that the applicant, recognizing some new legislation related to remands and the timing of processing, that they submitted a request for the city to begin that review process. And so we held a public hearing before the hearings official initially. That was the initial evidentiary hearing. Following that hearing, the hearings official, his decision was to approve the project with conditions. Those conditions address a range of issues. It was a combination of proposed conditions from the applicant, as well as several from staff, and some of those were combined. In effect, they address a variety of things, from needed infrastructure improvements to tree preservation, setbacks and screening, and also the phasing plan that the applicants requested, which grants a fairly generous timeline for their ability to build out the Following that decision, we received two appeals. One was filed on behalf of the applicant by Bill Close, and the primary focus of the applicant's appeal relates to a state statute known as the goalpost rule. And it basically has to do with the fact that you mentioned in terms of the exclusive criteria applicable here, and also that, basically, their position is that the hearings official erred by not deciding the issue of what standards will apply to the subsequent permits, and that any permits needed to carry out the project should be subject to only 2002 standards that were adopted into the code at that time. The applicant is looking to uphold but to modify the hearings official's decision to add a condition of approval that would make that determination clear about what standards apply, and that they only be the 2002 code requirements. The neighbors' appeal raises several issues relating to the availability of various public services and facilities, raising again the issue of the underlying conflict with the existing CUP for the cemetery, the issue of piping of Brayburn Creek, which would unnecessarily remove attractive natural vegetation according to the appellant's, and another issue related just to the overall vagueness or general nature of the application and the approval, and that it would be too vague. The opponent's position is that the hearings officials' decision should be reversed. So we have written appeal statements from both the parties. They were provided in your packet tonight, and so I won't go into a more exhaustive analysis. We'll, of course, hear from them tonight. But we did receive a number of additional letters of testimony, which you have at your places as well, so I'd advise you to review those as part of the deliberations as well. We also have an access to the full copy of the record to date, and you've got a copy up there just in case we need it. And you mentioned the two meetings, a special meeting on Thursday as well as next Monday, so I won't go into any further detail on that. So with that, I think I'll turn it back to you to open the public hearing.
Okay. I also, I realized I missed a really important question. So does anyone in the audience or a member of the commission wish to challenge the impartiality of any of the planning commissioners? I'll take that as a no. So we'll, I'll now open the public hearing with testimony from the applicant and those in support of the application. Please remember to give your name and address when you speak, and aside from the applicant, we're going to try to have your testimony be delivered in about three to five minutes, but we're going to be flexible because we have a good amount of people, but not enough that we're going to be here until midnight. So, and Commissioner Borowski is going to announce the names.
Yeah, I get to butcher the names, but we'll start with the applicant first, which is Rick? Rick? Rick?
Oh.
Either, any place that you want.
Good evening.
Oh, wait, that's Richie.
Richie Weinman.
Okay.
First of all, thank you. As volunteers, I really much, very much appreciate the time that you spend on the public's behalf.
Please speak louder.
I'm sorry. Okay. Is that better? Okay. So, I was thanking the Planning Commission for their time and trouble. They're volunteers, and I very much appreciate their public service. My name is Richie Weinman. I live at 55 West 31st Avenue, Eugene, 97405. I'm retired, but prior to my retirement, I worked for the city of Eugene Planning and Development Department for decades. I was the point person for housing and homelessness issues, among a lot of other things, and I did a lot of work on code issues as well, including the CIR amendment that's on the table tonight. I'm going to share why I think the proposed housing is needed and why it is important to act in the applicant's favor. I think we all know about both the documented need for low-income housing and the numerous adopted policies, both local and statewide, that address the importance of this issue from a planning standpoint. I can reference Goal 10 of the state, land use goals adopted in 1970, past city council goals from numerous city councils over the years, Envision Eugene's second pillar, and even the Planning Commission's own bylaws, which state in Article 2, Item C, quote, "to cooperate with private developers and public agencies in their effort to provide an adequate supply of housing for low-income families." These adopted goals and policies are not meant as aspirational lip service. Rather, each of them and all of them recognize the critical importance of ensuring that housing is available for our family members and neighbors. They are not isolated policies that are gathering dust on some obscure shelf. Sadly, we have a housing shortage, and way too many local residents are paying obscenely more than they can afford for housing, which we know puts them at real risk for homelessness. And with that comes a whole host of other community issues and personal issues. The city of Eugene also has an adopted housing dispersal plan. I know it very well because I wrote it, and I've submitted it to the Planning Commission and the city council for approval, and the current one, and it was adopted with only minor changes from what I wrote. And this policy states that the low-income housing will be dispersed throughout the community, and it's always been the case and is still the case that South Eugene is the least represented area for low-income housing. Hard-working people deserve to live in a decent place at an affordable cost. It's tragic that two-parent families with both people working full-time can't afford their housing. I think it's only fair that seniors and people with disabilities have affordable housing. If not, what kind of a community are we? Children, if they are expected to succeed in school and in life, need a stable, safe home to live in, a place that they can do their homework and use the dining room table to build that volcano project or some kind of fort or something. And they have to have their basic shelter needs met. This proposed housing will serve these populations. It is not even a very low-income project, which I prefer, but it's very important. It is targeted to those who work and often still struggle. These are the people who ring up our sales at Macy's or at the grocery store. They take care of our children at preschool, or nurture our parents at assisted living, or the people who are our parents. This housing is for our neighbors who fix our cars, put paint or siding on our homes, and assist our doctors. The residents will be our family members and current neighbors. I could take up your time with a splendid array of facts and figures and statistics that demonstrate the shortage of affordable housing. The adopted consolidated plan is a great source of data, and I'm going to trust that you are familiar with the gist of it, so I'm just going to limit it to just this one. The plan, consolidated plan, documents that there are 31,055 low-income renter households in Eugene, and 78% of them experience a housing cost burden, which is paying over 30% of their income on housing, overcrowding, or substandard conditions. In fact, 51% of low-income renters spend over 50% of their income for housing. No one actually is disputing the need. I want to point out that most of us who are here, at the table, myself included, are or have been homeowners. By and large, we are more financially comfortable than the half of our community who rent, and we view the world through the lenses of our own experience. So we have to remind ourselves at times how absolutely hard it is for people who try hard but barely get by. My own children and their spouses share that monthly struggle where one new problem, the brakes on their car go out, their child has a broken arm, has a bunch of medical bills, whatever it is, puts them into a financial panic. And so, in many ways, I'm really familiar with it firsthand. The construction of low-income housing is very challenging. I know this from my years of work in the field. Unlike private for-profit developers who build market-rate housing, which basically involves two funding sources, the money they bring to the table and the money they borrow from a lender, okay, they have to put together, low-income housing developers have to put together, an array of housing subsidies that come from different sources, all with their own peculiar characteristics, and this puzzle gets put together, and it's time-consuming, it's painful, it's expensive, it's frustrating, and what every funder wants and demands is some certainty toward the end of the process. They want to know that they're putting their money towards something that's actually going to happen. And the idea that there's a big question mark about what looms in the future because of this future government process is a project killer. Based on experience, I'm sure that's exactly what some neighbors want. And I'm sure it is not what the publicly adopted goals and policies are in place for. They are in place to make low-income housing a priority. For many years, I was the lucky person who would come from the city to attend a neighborhood meeting to discuss and defend a proposed low-income housing development. These were always really well-attended meetings. And I read every word of testimony and heard every argument. Almost all of them were fear-based, and typically based on assumed facts that weren't facts at all. What I consistently heard at every one of these meetings was that low-income housing was important, supported, but this was just the wrong location. I always heard that the proposed location was better suited to be a park. Those who made these arguments were transparent then, and yet the developments invariably got built thanks in no small part to the political support of our elected officials, that same support that made low-income housing one of their city council goals. Fortunately, all of these objections, without fail, disappeared once these excellent homes were constructed. For 30 years, my wife and I have lived in our home in South Eugene, less than one mile from this property. I support Cathedral Park without hesitation because I know it will be a benefit to the community I live in. The issue then isn't the need for housing. That's a given. It also shouldn't be the location, which is terrific, and it's part of our precious buildable lands inventory. It's more about the rules for making it happen. The key decision, using my first time of a number of football analogies, cannot be punted again. It's not a can to be kicked down the road unless your intent is to kill the low-income housing project. We believe the rules of this game are clear and cannot be changed now that the game has begun. I, for one, am disappointed that the city staff, for whatever reason, is taking a position contrary to supporting a low-income housing development. The critical issue in front of you tonight is what is known as the goalpost rule. It's a metaphor, of course. You don't move the goalposts in a football game once the game has begun. It doesn't only apply to football goalposts, of course. It applies to any and all rule changes once the game has started. This project was submitted under a particular set of rules, and state law clearly states, says that the rules, standards, and criteria at that time are fixed and must apply in the future. It should be simple. Are these new rules critical? They are. Well, I'll only comment that virtually all of the homes built, they aren't, I should say, I'll only comment that virtually all of the homes built around Cathedral Park and Rest Haven were constructed prior to 2002, and they sure look great and aren't causing any problems. I'm in that area all the time, like almost every day, and I don't see or experience any glaring problems. I've yet to be in a traffic jam on Willamette Street or anywhere south of Crest Drive. The hearings official did an excellent and thorough job of ruling on the application, but in keeping with the football theme, he punted to the Planning Commission on this goalpost issue. Perhaps he felt that this was a policy issue for a larger body, such as the Planning Commission, to determine, and I understand the city attorney has written an opinion that the Planning Commission can rule on this. City staff, as I understand it, is making a peculiar argument that I can't quite get my arms around. They are claiming that some of the more recently adopted land use and regulatory requirements can be instead applied through the building permit process. These are things that were not part of the building permit process before, and they aren't now. They are land use issues, and more importantly, these would be new requirements that were not in place in 2002. No. Okay? There is no issue in accepting all legitimate building permit issues that relate to life safety, fire safety, stable construction. That is a given. It is a legitimate purpose for issuing a building permit. But to tack on land use requirements and claim they are part of getting a building permit is clearly changing the rules once the game has begun. You can't claim that you haven't moved the goalposts when instead you're tapping it on 50 yards to the playing field, you know, just when the team is about to score. The concept is identical. Tacking recent regulations onto building permits as a workaround and claiming they aren't land use decisions isn't keeping with the goalpost rule at all. It's an argument that would only fool a lawyer. More importantly, this is really important to me, it isn't in keeping with the spirit of the rule that created the incentive to construct more controlled income and rent housing. The whole idea of the incentive was to meet the city council's very clear goal of addressing a housing crisis that has only gotten worse since the bad old days of 2002. There is another issue besides the entirely valid argument about the critical need for low-income housing. The city of Eugene is currently about 600 units short of their required supply of medium-density residential units, as identified in Envision Eugene in our metro plan. This project alone would provide about 30% of that target. In summary, what we have here is a great piece of property. My experience is it's actually nicer than most of the properties that we ever built low-income housing on. It's really particularly nice. The owners of that property want to create new housing with a public purpose to serve lower-income households. There is a critical need for that housing, and the location is excellent. There are adopted goals and policies that stress the importance of the housing, and there is ample data to prove it is needed. But to have it built, there needs to be a level of certainty about future requirements, and there cannot be requirements that kill the project. So if you want to kill this project, you can. All you have to do is either move the goalposts or threaten to move them later. Both are unfair and are contrary to state statutes. I have never served on the Planning Commission, but twice I was appointed to the city of Eugene's Human Rights Commission. In this matter, both commissions should see this issue the same. Housing is a fundamental human right, and I encourage you to be on the human right side of this issue. Thank you very much for taking the time. I'll leave copies of my testimony.
Commissioner Borowski.
Sure.
Thank you for your testimony. For me, what would be helpful, I understand that... For me, what would be helpful, I understand the testimony that you gave towards the policy implications of this. For me, one of the big issues is going to be having to address the goalpost issue and some of the statutes that the city attorney and rulings that the city attorney has cited. So if either now or in your rebuttal testimony, you can give any type of clarity or help, you know, say why you feel that they're inappropriate, that would help me out, especially the Riviera against Bannon and, I don't know how to say it, but Garnier versus Gladstone, those types of things. If you could help me to be able to...
I think I'm going to turn to Bill Close and ask him to do that for me.
Thank you.
If that's all right.
Yeah, and we can do it later on if you'd like. I just, those were some things that would help me to get to the appeal, actually, the meat of the appeal, not the policy parts.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Rick Satri.
Good evening, commissioners. Rick Satri with Shermer Satri Group. Our business address is 375 West Fourth Avenue, Suite 201 in Eugene. I have just a brief message to share with you this evening, and a little bit of it is duplicate from the excellent testimony that Mr. Wyman provided, but we'll try and be brief. In this regard, there's really only one issue tonight. It's just one big-picture, critical issue. The hearings official got into all the details, so that you don't have to do that again. However, the hearings official erred, as you've heard, on not including a particular condition in his decision, and that is why we are here before you this evening. You have a unique opportunity to correct that error by making the decision that he was not able to do so on his own. And as you've heard, it's referred to as the goalpost rule. Basically, the city attorney said that ordinances and standards not in effect when the application was submitted but are in effect today will be applicable at the time of building permit submittal and issuance. The hearings official passed on that decision, punted it, as Mr. Wyman said. We subsequently objected to that as being contrary to Oregon's goalpost rule. It's not only contrary to law, but it will also kill the project. We have asked that the hearings official adopt a condition of approval to clarify which standards and criteria would be applied to the project in the future. There is a distinction between land use requirements and building code requirements. We have a land use code and a building code, and this is all under the guise of the land use code. So why is it important not to kill the project? As you've heard, there's a housing shortage in this community. I believe in one of your recent meetings, you were the beneficiary of a presentation wherein it was shared with you that the community is short some 600 affordable dwelling units, above and beyond those previously identified or already identified through other means. Cathedral Park includes 172 units. As Mr. Wyman said, you have an opportunity to say yes tonight and fill 30% of that shortage. This opportunity to build 172 units of affordable housing in South Eugene does not exist under the current code. Application was filed in 2002, under the code that was in effect at that time. At that time, controlled income and rent housing was available on this property planned and zoned as it is. And in the current code, it's not eligible to be proposed in this current zoning, in that property zoning. So it's really a one-situation opportunity. Ruling in favor of the appellant's position, you shouldn't have any fear in ruling in favor. It's not as though you're going to be opening Pandora's Box, and all sorts of other applications are going to be flowing through and being able to utilize a policy decision that you're going to make with your decision. This is a one opportunity to address this one application that was filed and still valid under the code in effect prior to 2002. It's a one-time situation. You get to be policymakers. The question is, do we want quality affordable housing dispersed throughout our community? You can make the decision. You can affirm and modify, this is what we're asking you to do, affirm yet modify the hearing official's approval to include clarity regarding the goalpost rule. What we have for you, we have two handouts for you. We've got seven copies of each of these two for you. I realize three of the commissioners are absent, but there is one copy for all seven members. There's also a copy for staff. We have two documents. One is a copy, you don't need this, but we're sharing it with you anyway, is a copy of your bylaws. Bylaw C, or in terms of purpose, C, in your bylaws, as Mr. Wyman said, to cooperate with private developers and public agencies in their effort to provide an adequate supply of housing for low-income families. It's part of your purpose statement. The second is a suggested finding that you could, that we're asking you to consider in your deliberations. It's a finding, naturally, that the applicant wrote, but it's a finding which addresses specifically how the goalpost rule can be addressed successfully with your decision. So there's copies of these two documents for each of you. With that, I'd like to say thank you for your consideration of our request. We're available for questions.
Commissioner Jaworski.
On the goalpost rule, it's been cited many, many times in different ways, that it, if enforced, as the city attorney has indicated, it could possibly make the project financially infeasible. It's been said that it may have subjective standards that make it unable to do 172 units. And you indicated it might kill the project. Now, I understand, under these existing rules, that you're referring to multiple CIR projects have been built in the city, and it didn't stop them. So could you, does any of this information specifically identify why you feel it would kill the project?
Couple of examples. Comparing the code in effect prior to 2002, under which applies for this application in the code today. A large differences in the multifamily housing standards. There are certain requirements that there be a maximum block length of only a few hundred feet. This is a linear site, there's some topography. If we were applying the multifamily standards today, there would have to be multiple, the project would have to be broken into blocks with cross streets. Second is that parking needs to be in parking courts. In order to make parking courts possible in this situation, the proposed private drive aisle would have to be a public street. And the parking would have to be in parking courts, a nice name for parking lots, not associated with the drive aisle as currently proposed, but with a public street. There are other differences in the land use code between then and now with respect to stormwater management, Goal V resources, that would complicate moving forward with the project. So when we say it runs the risk of killing the project, as we've heard, it's a very complicated financial equation, quadratic equation. Many variables come together to make an affordable housing project affordable, to put the budget together. Frequently, there's a finite budget. Doesn't matter what number we might pick as an example, but there's a fixed amount of dollars available. If the cost of development were to increase because of new standards or a different set of standards that are today that were not in effect when the application was submitted, it runs the risk of perhaps just tipping the project into a category where it couldn't go forward, or, quite likely, it would result in a significant reduction in the number of dwelling units that could be constructed in the first place. If the cost per unit were to increase because of new standards, couldn't build as many. You'll hear from others this evening that are experts at providing affordable housing. They'll probably be able to do a much better job than I can about explaining the nuances of the financial packaging and the budget.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I want to follow up on those questions as well. So the block length, are you talking about the rule that requires you have articulation within 150 feet? In other words, you can't have any more than 150 feet without some articulation?
No, no. This would be the notion of, it's in the parking standard, don't have it memorized, I apologize. It's in the parking standard where there can only be so many parking courts.
No, no, I'm talking about block length.
Yeah. If we were to look at the multifamily standards and look at the parking courts, multiple points of access, maximum length, maximum number of courts that can be joined together before they have to be accessible to a street, it begins to divide the project, you know, the property into much smaller units than what this plan illustrates.
So you can't really cite anything that says specifically the block length of the building is...
I didn't bring that with me this evening. Thank you.
I'm going to horn in here if I can, Bill Close. I hoped not to speak tonight, but this is kind of a detail question. In our final argument to the hearings official, which is included in your packet, it would be PC Agenda, page 53, that final argument goes through a shopping list of problems posed by the land use regulations that were adopted after 2002, which would apply to this project but for the goalpost rule. And so, for example, on page 53, the argument lists multifamily standards in 9.5500, and then it lists several of those standards that are really problematic. So, for example, the first one there, street frontage requirements, EC 95500 sub 4 sub B. You need to have a certain percentage of your street frontage occupied by buildings. Well, the street frontage is Willamette, so you can see how this is, this whole project is sighted along a single road that winds up to the, well, be winding to the west. And because of the very nature of the site, you just can't put any buildings on Willamette Street. So if these standards applied to this project, the city would not issue a building permit because they'd say you don't comply with the multifamily development standards. And the next one there is block requirements. Quote, "Multiple family developments, eight or more acres in size, shall be developed as a series of complete blocks bounded by public or private streets, natural areas, waterways, high-voltage lines, and other similar substantial physical features may form up to two sides of a block. Maximum block size within a multifamily development shall be no greater than four acres." So it's a killer. I mean, here we have a project that is built off a single road, a single private drive that winds to the west off Willamette Street, and under this standard, that would not be lawful. You'd have to take that long road, and you'd have to break the entire site into city blocks. That means you'd have roads going down the hill, down the steep hill to the south, budding up against the neighbors' houses, the neighbors are going to testify against this project, and then making the turn to make a complete block and going back up the hill. The basic design of this project is to preserve the maximum amount of trees to the south of the units in the road, to take care of the neighbors. This block length standard would require taking that tree area and breaking it up into city streets, down steep streets. It doesn't make sense. It's a killer.
If I could...
And it goes on and on, there's a bunch more standards there.
Can I ask you, in that case, two of those block phases can be open space, so I don't see how you have to have streets, or it says it can be rights-of-way for utility easements. I mean, in other words, it doesn't require you to have streets there. I'm just concerned that some of these things that are cited, that just...
Commissioner Baker, can we specifically keep it to questions, and then we can follow through with your discussion during the deliberation?
There may very well be some standards that actually increase the cost. I mean, for example, parking requirements, where in the older code, you weren't allowed to provide all compact parking spaces.
Can you try to frame it in a question?
I'm concerned if you've looked at those, because there may be, in other words, there may be some countervailing forces that would balance out. In other words, if you can provide all compact parking spaces under the new code, and you weren't allowed in the past to do that, then, you know, there would be some trade-off.
I'm not following your point exactly, Commissioner, but that the first sentence of that block structure standard says, "shall be developed as a series of complete blocks bounded by public or private streets." That means the entire site plan shifts from a single private drive going through the site to a series of roads in a block format that eat up trees and put asphalt next to the neighbor's house and skyrocket the price. I mean, you can check with city staff about the meaning of this block structure standard. To us, it looks like a killer. Staff might say to you, oh, yes, but we won't apply that. We'll give them some relief. And that then gets into the issue of, well, how does a developer, a would-be developer who's dating the property owner to possibly develop a project know for sure, you know, whether he's going to get relief from this standard or not? On its face, the standard appears to be a killer. So, but anyway, page 53 starts a list of these standards that are problematic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No further questions or responses?
I wanted to add one last thing, Mr. Borowski, to your comment about the budget, or Mr. Jaworski, your question about the costs. I was reminded just now that rents are capped by HUD regulations. And one of the complicating situations is that if the cost of the project or the cost per unit increases beyond a certain threshold, that the capped rental rate wouldn't be able to cover the construction cost. So it's, like we said, it's a quadratic equation. There is a number of factors that begin to put the project at risk.
Thank you. I did understand that. I didn't know you also had a detailed budget of what those costs were, so that you could therefore differentiate what factors would influence the tipping point. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Kelly Williams, followed by Jeff Passador.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Kelly Williams. My address is Post Office Box 182 in Springfield. I'm the Executive Director of Cascade Housing Association. We're a nonprofit developer of affordable housing. We've also submitted a letter to all of you that, explaining the hearing official's ruling, has a number of consequences for the Cathedral Park project. I'm going to sound like I simply took notes from the last two speakers, but we all have the same idea here. Two of the consequences that relate to the parking design and establishment of block configuration, does that sound familiar, will reduce the scope of the project probably by dozens of units. The goal for the city is to create new affordable units. And, you know, we've got to fill a vast Eugene need of about 600 units now, and that's just going to keep growing as the area grows. The construction of Cathedral Park in the 2002 application can add 172 apartments to the housing stock. Reducing that is counterproductive to the goal. If Cathedral Park cannot be built out as initially projected, the need for the housing units doesn't go away. It's also a safe bet that the need will increase over time, and time is a stumbling block to the creation of affordable housing. It's already been mentioned that costs are a little crazier for development of affordable housing than standard. housing than standard housing. We know from our experiences in developing affordable housing in other communities, the escalation of costs over time alone is staggering. In one instance, and excuse me, I'm fighting something in my throat. In one instance, a few years ago, we built two low-income apartment complexes right across the street from each other in the same town. We used the same architect and the same contractor. The hard construction costs per square foot increased 54% just in 12 months on those two projects. Funding is limited. It's limited to regional availability of low-income housing tax credits, as well as a myriad of other state and local funding sources. Each million dollars of available tax credits and the other funding can be quantified by the number of units that that million dollars can build. In the case of those two projects that I mentioned, which were just a year apart, the number of units dropped from about 11 to a little less than eight units per million dollars. That was a few years ago. Our most recent project, which leased up in late 2014, finished out with seven units per million dollars. And those are just hard costs. That's not the architect, the appraisers, the land cost. That's just the sticks, stones, concrete, and the labor it took to build that. That's all in sharp contrast to our very first project, which we completed in 1993. We got 38 units for each million dollars that went into the hard costs on that. So in addition to limiting the scope of the project with some of these goalpost rules, the longer it takes to get this thing built, the harder it's going to be to get it done on an affordable budget. Time is the problem for all affordable housing developers. We can't stop the clock, but the Commissioners have an opportunity here to reverse the hearings official's decision that's going to make it harder to meet the local goals for affordable housing, and we hope for a positive outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Passador, followed by Rebecca Alefent.
My name is Jeff Passador. My address is Post Office Box 2968 in Portland, Oregon. I'm here to speak about the benefits associated with optimizing housing opportunities like this. I'm trying to preserve the ability for development opportunities like this to serve the greatest number of people possible by perhaps making sure that the land is utilized as effectively as possible. I am going to bury you in some minutia. Hopefully, it's interesting. Hopefully, it speaks on behalf of the people that need this housing. And I actually have a different opinion than the opinion that's been spoken about this evening, about 600 housing units needed, and I'll share with you why. My company is a property management company. We manage both market rate and affordable housing in multiple western states, including here in the Eugene and Springfield area, where we manage 545 apartment units, both market rate and below market rate. Below market rate generally meaning affordable housing, not low-income housing necessarily, but that housing that's in between, as you heard about, for daycare workers and service industry workers. I want to share with you some statistics that my staff developed for me Friday when I received the invitation to speak. These are brief, and I think they'll be relevant. By optimizing the use of a site like this and making sure that it is economically viable, we help more people that need this housing. The 545 units of housing that we manage in the Eugene-Springfield area, because of the shortage of housing, will see about 100 to 120 families move on this year to find alternative housing. That amount of turnover compares to our waiting list length last Friday of 1,103 names that have gone to the trouble of telling us almost everything about themselves and demonstrating that they are eligible and in need of housing. 1,103 families, individuals or elderly, single folks that need housing. To give you an idea of how we hear from these people in the dozen or so properties we manage, I polled every one of our property managers. We received 250 to 300 phone calls a week. We see 30 to 50 people who simply visit our communities and our offices and don't bother to call because they know how short the housing is. Some other statistics that I think are helpful. I went back to 2012 because anything earlier than that is irrelevant. Why do we want to maximize a site like this and build as much housing as we can? Here are the occupancy rates for the last five years for our housing activity in Eugene and Springfield. I'll round off to the nearest full percentage point. 98% in 2012, 98% in 2013, 98% in 2014, 99% in 2015, and year-to-date, again, 99%. There may be a shortage of 600 housing units, but I have a list of 1,103 names, 1,105 names, 1,103 names that would beg to argue that there's a lot more a shortage than we might be willing to acknowledge. And in fact, one of the solutions to make a difference is to optimize opportunities when they're presented and to make sure they serve the greatest good possible for the greatest number of people possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Alefent.
My name is Rebecca Alefent, and I live at 611 Woodleaf Lane. I am proud to stand here and just represent someone who lives currently in low-income housing here in Eugene and specifically in South Eugene. And I'll be brief with my little testimonial. I moved here to Eugene and attended the University of Oregon. I graduated from the University of Oregon. And after traveling abroad, I returned and decided to start a family here. My husband at the time and I had a child, and while our relationship didn't work out, I decided to stay here, this is my community, and raise my child here. I then, let's see. At that time, I lived with friends of mine, so we lived in a communal home. I had a room with my child and so forth. And as my child grew up, or is growing up, he's six now, realizing the importance of space for a family and that that's not really an appropriate way that I would like to raise him. So I'm realizing now that those types of homes that are dwellings of multiple adults, it's being dominated, the housing market is being dominated by landlords who consider those homes as dwellings for college students and are priced as such, where it's divided among the room, and that's sort of the price that is, that I'm seeing as actual family homes. What once were family homes are now mostly occupied by college students. And so this is a problem, this was a problem for myself and many young families that I know in the community. I had a boyfriend a few years ago, and we moved into a home together with my son. And we each worked full-time to just barely get by. And it was just a simple home in Eugene. And it was very challenging, especially on a relationship. We really didn't spend very much time together. And in the end, we broke up, we went separate ways, and I moved into Woodleaf as a single mother. And felt very fortunate to live, to remain in the community, and my son could go to the school that I chose for him in South Eugene, which is where he attended last year in kindergarten. Once I kind of got on my feet financially, the man who I had been living with moved in with me, and our financial burden made it such that we could live as a family with less stress. And next month, we'll celebrate our first year anniversary as a married couple and as a legitimate family, so to speak. And so what I'd like to say and emphasize is that living in that community has really provided my family a stepping stone. It's not somewhere that we feel will live forever, but it's giving us a hope to move forward and develop our family, and we've been able to save, and we look forward to owning a home, hopefully in the South Eugene neighborhood where we currently live. And I'm grateful to be here and to kind of represent what the type of family is that seek out living in these kinds of styles of community. So thank you for hearing my story.
Brittany Quick Warner, followed by Sid Lichen.
My name is Brittany Quick Warner. I live at 3330 Vidara Drive. I have been in Eugene for four years now. I moved here from Kansas City, Missouri, where my parents still currently live. I'm really excited to pick them up from the train station here in Eugene tomorrow for a two-week trip, of which my brother and I, who moved out here a couple of years ago, have been plotting to figure out how we are going to convince them on this trip to move to Eugene. We are the only two kids in the family, and my parents are aging. And my dad is retired. My mom is a preschool teacher who makes about $1.50 more than minimum wage at 56 years old. My parents both made about minimum wage most of my life. I grew up in a low-income family, but still was offered some really great opportunities and has moved to, I have moved to Eugene, have a job that has afforded me what I would consider a moderate income. And my husband and I just recently bought a house here in Eugene. But the process for us, even on what I think is a privileged income, it was hard. We couldn't find a house for over two years that was in an area that we wanted to live in or that was, you know, kind of fit our style. And I only imagine that folks who are not as privileged as I am financially, how hard it is to keep looking and looking and how disheartening and frustrating it is, especially when you pick a community like Eugene and you really want to be here, and you're making an effort to do so, and you're just not able to because of the situation that is not only dire in Eugene, but I know across the state of Oregon. So I think 172 units is not insignificant, and the opportunity that we have right now to support this development, to legally make some decisions, that this is a priority for our community and that we're going to do what we can to accommodate this. I think that, you know, the neighbors have valid concerns about the character of the development, and I think that it's important that we, you know, look to the developers to uphold the character of the development, and that's something that I think, you know, down the road, we'll have to make sure that this development does as well. But for us to upfront make the decision that this is not the type of housing or that we can accommodate this with what we have right now legally available to us, I think is the wrong decision at the wrong time for our community. I think it's really important for us to accommodate this affordable housing, and I really support this development.
Thank you. Sid Lichen, followed by Dennis Cassidy.
Chair Taylor, Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Sid Lichen, and I'm wearing, I wear several hats, but tonight I'm actually here as, these opinions are my own, but I also have, not only serve as a Lane County Commissioner, but for the last five and a half, last five and a half years, I have been the Lane County's representative on the Housing Policy Board. And as one of our hats that we also wear, we're also the HACSA Commission as well. So I've been a strong advocate for affordable housing for many, many years. A lot of this goes to the fact that my family has been involved in the residential building and development business for many, many years. And in fact, proudly, 1990, the Oregon State Home Builders Association honored my family's business, Lichen Construction, as the Home Builder of the Year. And of course, we were a for-profit company, and I think part of the reason why that I have been such an advocate for affordable housing because of the issue of rising costs and wages not keeping up. And in fact, just recently, I was at a conference on the coast, Coos Bay North Bend, and it was called the Coastal Economic Conference, actually set up by Senator Arne Roblin and Representative Catty McEwen, who are the co-hosts. One of the things we found is we spoke to many folks that worked there, the Mill Casino and other places, that affordable housing is a crisis in the Coos Bay North Bend area. It's a crisis no matter where you are in the state of Oregon. And so when I look at a project like this, this is really, to me, is the epitome of what can be and what makes our community, I think, not just Eugene and Springfield, but throughout Lane County, a place where people want to come and visit and stay and hopefully live. I'm a fifth-generation Oregonian. My great-grandparents migrated here in the late 1870s, and I've stayed. And people ask me, why? Well, because we live in an unbelievable state, in a very giving state. And with this, I'm hopeful, and by the way, I don't envy your positions. I volunteered myself for 12 years representing the city of Springfield. I don't envy your position. But frankly, planning commissions, to me, are one of the most important commissions that you can have within a municipal government. You're the backbone, you're the decision-maker when it comes to so many of these quasi-judicial decision-making, and I really respect, no matter what decision you make, I know you're going to work very, very hard on this and do your diligence, and I just want to say thank you for your service, first and foremost, and I have high respect for you. But I think this is really an opportunity and for affordable housing. I've advocated affordable housing in Springfield, I've advocated for affordable housing in Junction City, and now here in Eugene as well. So this is a great opportunity, and I want to say thank you very much for taking this up, and I thank you for the ability to testify this evening as well. Thank you.
Questions? Dennis Cassidy, followed by Ed McMahon.
My name is Dennis Cassidy. I'm a board member with Rental Owners Association. I've got my own rental properties, and I'd just like to state that when I advertise a property on Craigslist, my phone burns up because of the shortage of available housing in Eugene. I'm born and raised here, and I believe that there's a strong need for not only low-income housing, but middle-income housing. Thank you.
Ed McMahon, followed by Kami Copeland.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ed McMahon, Executive Director of the Home Builders Association of Lane County, 1065 River Road. And I'm on vacation, so I'm sitting down. Certainly appreciate your service to the community, and your commitment has definitely earned my respect. Thank you. You know, for several years now, I've been trying to educate the community about the critical shortage of buildable lots that we have within our urban growth boundary. I bring this up tonight because we've all had Econ 101, and when supply is extremely low and demand is very high, we know what that does to prices. And my main reason for being here tonight is I'm concerned that we won't see many more affordable housing projects like this within our community. The availability of the land and everything is really going to constrain that. And future affordable housing projects are probably going to have to be on redevelopment sites, and we know what that does to cost. So you've heard a lot of good testimony tonight. I'll make mine short. The hearing official moved the goalpost. You have the power to put it back in the right position. Please don't let this project die. We need it desperately in our community. Thank you.
Okay.
We're going to...
Kami Copeland.
So I have to correct you. It's my poor handwriting, but it's Carrie.
I'm sorry.
And my address is 246 Holly View, Eugene, and I am here representing Cornerstone Community Housing tonight. We own seven affordable housing complexes here in Eugene, managed by Cambridge Property Management. So I was going to tell you about the need, but I think Jeff kind of hit on that. I was going to tell you about how many calls we get for housing in our office every day, but Jeff illustrated that. So I want to tell you a story about 15 or 16 years ago when I first moved to town. And I would ride my bike home from work, and I would go up Fox Hollow to do a little exercise. And I remember looking and being like, oh, I want to live in those apartments. I was young and single and, you know, like, yeah, I want to live there. And now, fast forward to now, and representing... And now, fast-forward to now, in representing Cornerstone, that is the Woodleaf Apartment Complex up on Fox Hollow, and it's a beautiful property. Cornerstone believes that people should live in dignity and respect, and our communities then are designed with that in mind. And so, we have beautiful properties. We take excellent care of them. We make sure that people's units look tidy and neat. And so, I think I'm speaking to neighbors who might be concerned about what a neighborhood would look like, but our affordable housing builds and maintains beautiful properties in great communities. And with affordable housing comes services, onsite, community building, resource referral. For those who want to step up, it's a nice, safe place to harbor. And then, we also serve a lot of people who might age in place and might not move on, or maybe this is the first step up and out of homelessness. So, the need is there. Affordable housing agencies do a really great job, and Cornerstone is fully in support of this project. And that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to move, unless there's anyone else that hasn't submitted a green sheet that's a proponent, then we'll move to the neutral position.
Okay. So, for neutral, first is Jacqueline Welch, followed by John Stark. John Stark, followed by Mary Leighton.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Stark. My wife and I live at 391 Braburn, right near the proposed development. And we are both, have discussed the project, the proposal, and we're neutral and ambivalent about it because we strongly support, for many of the reasons that have been cited here, low-income, affordable, high-density housing. We acknowledge that this community has a great need for it, and we think that the Cathedral, sorry. We are neutral, ambivalent about it. We support low-income, affordable, high-density housing, and we think that Cathedral Park could be a good location for the housing. On the other hand, we are concerned because we do not support the proposal because there are no guarantees that the forest buffer between Braburn Drive and the proposed development will be protected. The hearing official's decision did not conclusively say that the development will protect the buffer. The forest is critical to the neighborhood's character. It's beneficial to existing residents. It will be beneficial to future residents in low-income housing as well. It's essential to the wildlife. Eugene cannot destroy a forest as we face climate change. And so, we urge the Planning Commission to require that the existing forest buffer be protected.
Thank you. Mary Leighton.
My name is Mary Leighton. I live at 4046 Normandy Way, which is about a block from west of the western boundary of that development. And I'm not ambivalent at all. I just couldn't figure out, reading all the details, whether I supported the appeal or I didn't support the appeal. I definitely support the development of this project. I think it's a good project. It belongs in my backyard. That's a wonderful backyard. It's a perfect use for it. It is fully able to accommodate that level of density. And I assume that in the course of navigating all the rules that will apply one way or the other, we will figure out how to preserve the nature, the land features that mitigate erosion and that preserve water flow and keep the neighbors' houses from washing away, problems which have been identified historically and which account for some of the resistance in my neighborhood. One of the objections to building there that I've heard at this kind of meeting is that the schools are not able to accommodate the likely children that would be in such a development. And I just want to say that there's ample research that, in fact, these schools are quite able to deal with that with no downside for the existing kids. Basically, when school poverty levels get to 50% or higher, every kid suffers. Nobody learns as well as they should. Dispensing housing that has moderate and low-income families, and it solves that problem at much lower cost to the whole community. The schools in this, that serve our neighborhood, Edgewood, Spencer Butte, and South Eugene, have well below the average poverty level of schools in this community. They run from about 28% to 33%. The number of children likely in this development would not shift those numbers very much. And furthermore, this is the kind of high tide that lifts all boats. Our families take good care of the kids, therefore they take good care of the schools. All the kids get taken care of by the families that have resources to take care of them. This is not a concern I have. This is not an opinion of mine. This is well-documented in research. And the money follows the kids, so more kids go to those campuses, more money goes to those campuses to serve them. I've worked in public schools my whole life, including here. I know this. So, we will not allow our schools to be compromised because that's the kind of people who live in South Eugene. This, this particular neighborhood is a beautiful neighborhood. It will be lovely to have more different kinds of neighbors than we currently have. Mine, I'm on the board of the Homeowners Association, which has got quite mixed opinions, as you might, and you'll hear some of them. But these are good people. They are good neighbors, and they will, they will make sure the city does due diligence on preserving the essential landforms and protections. But in the end, they will welcome the people in this development. I urge you to solve whatever problems remain in the way of making this development happen, whatever that takes. We've got lots of brains in this room, lots of expertise, lots of experience in making development decisions and making developments possible. You need to focus on getting to a yes for this project, recognizing there's going to be some pushback and some complaining and whining, but this is Eugene. You can't do anything without that happening. So, I urge you, please, to make this project happen and activate all the talent there is available to make it a good project, one that we'll be happy to visit. Thank you.
Thank you. So, next, we'll move on to those against or opposed to the appeal. So, first up is going to be Marilyn Cohen.
My name is Marilyn Cohen. I live at 71 Westbrook Way in Eugene. I'd like to thank you, and I appreciate all that you're doing on this case. I'd like to say, just at the beginning, this is a technical thing for myself. I'm a retired attorney, but I am not representing the other co-appellants as an attorney. I said I would appeal, and the rest of the group said that they were really concerned. They're adversely affected. But we couldn't come up with $1,200 each to appeal. And so, I said the people could join me in my appeal, but I'd like to make it clear that it is my appeal. And I also want you to know the number of people that are affected seriously by it. I'd also like to say that I was a low-income housing attorney with the National Housing Law Project in Berkeley for five years, working nationally, working in Selma, Alabama. I mean, I've just been through this. And one of the things we always did was make sure that the laws were complied with. And that's the thrust of my appeal in this case, that there are requirements, there's a code provision, and it hasn't been complied with. There are two tracks to denial in this case. One is the opinions or the findings of Public Works Commission. Public Works said there was insufficient evidence to indicate that the project should go forward, insufficient evidence of compliance. They found that there was no wastewater facility at 40th and Willamette, that only part of the project would have wastewater facility if they can go under the creek. But assuming they can, the southwest corner would have wastewater facility, but it is not available on Willamette. And currently, there's a cut moratorium on Willamette because there's been paving. So, the project can't go under Willamette to get to a manhole on the east side of 40th. So, public wastewater is not available. And because the 1995 conditional use permit prohibits the applicant from using other parts of the cemetery for roads or installing utilities, the project cannot use that part of the cemetery to get to 40th. 40th is up on the, 40th and Willamette is up further north, and they would have to cross another part. They cannot commit to using that property. They don't have the right yet until they get a new CUP. So, they can't meet the commitment level of the code. And I guess I should back up. The code says that if there are no public facilities, an affirmative finding can be made if there's evidence that's presented to the hearings official, which means evidence at the hearing, that the applicant can make a commitment to provide private facilities. Well, he has to make the commitment before the hearings official makes his decision. He has to say, "Yes, I can make this commitment to get up to 40th. Yes, I can make the other commitments that I'd be required, and I can go into those." He couldn't make that commitment because he doesn't have approval under the 1995 CUP. And that's the basic error that the hearings official has made regarding the 1995 CUP. He said that it could be conditioned on getting a CUP in the future, the underlying CUP. But the applicant needed it at the time of the hearing, not afterwards. He needed to be able to say, "I have evidence that I can commit to providing private services. I have the permission now to provide private services." And he simply couldn't say that. He couldn't say that about providing utility lines. The utilities have to cross another part of the property outside of the development area. While it looks like the road, that little lip at the right, is part of the development area, it's at the lower right, it's actually off the development area. It's another part of the, of the property. So, even the road that he's put in, he doesn't have permission at this point and cannot make a commitment. And our position is that he needs to have the 1995 CUP changed before the hearings official could have made a decision, and he didn't. And that's a fatal flaw, and the case should be denied. And that applies to all the facilities on the site. In 19, in 2004, I hope you've read some of this, of my submissions, Lubbock said that the land has been dedicated for cemetery use. No housing development can occur, no infrastructure development can occur, and no roads and no installation of facilities on other parts of the property can occur under the 1995 CUP. That CUP is still in effect. And until that CUP changes, there's no commitment that can be made. And that requires a reversal of the hearings official's decision. So, what, as you look at it, I think there are two tracks that you can look at. One is Public Works saying no wastewater facility at Willamette. They said no stormwater facility, insufficient evidence regarding stormwater facilities for the dwelling units, and that the road is not feasible. The road is too steep. The hearings commissioner, hearings official said, "Well, the road may be too steep. That can be dealt with later." If a road is too steep, it's too steep. It seems to me that as a minimum, as Public Works said, as a minimum, the road should be feasible. So, you have Public Works saying that the evidence is insufficient to go forward and to show compliance, and you have the commitment issue, that he can't make the commitment under the 1995 CUP. So, those apply to the first criterion of 9.724, which is the basic approval criterion code. The second part deals with the design of the project. And there are two parts of the design. This is part B of that provision. There are two parts. One, that deals with unnecessary removal of vegetation. And the second part is that we're dealing with is ingress and egress. Our position regarding the unnecessary removal of vegetation is kind of a two-part or maybe a three-part argument. I'm trying to think of how the simplest way to put it. The applicant plans to put a pipe in, to pipe 340 feet across the southwest border of the property where Braburn, to pipe all of Braburn Creek. Our position is that is, that is unnecessary for the project for two reasons. One, his purpose of putting it in is so that he can pump water to a reservoir to irrigate other parts of the development. That is not necessary for the housing development. The other parts, there's, there are other parts of the cemetery, and there's a housing development. He wants to put, to put this pipe in and disturb natural vegetation to irrigate other parts. It's unnecessary for the project. The hearings official said it was necessary, and he gave two reasons. It was necessary to put the sanitary line in, but the Public Works said the sanitary line just needs to go under the creek to connect to whatever sewer is on the other side. It doesn't need 340 feet of piping to get under the creek. So, this whole extensive area of piping and removal of vegetation wouldn't be necessary for the sanitary lines. As far as the stormwater, which was the other reason that the hearings official gave, there's no evidence in the record from the applicant that such piping is needed. He doesn't describe what the piping would be, why a length of a football field needs to, to go back to football, needs to be piped for the storm, stormwater. There's no finding that it's, no showing that it's necessary. And Public Works said that the, that shouldn't, pumping it in order to irrigate a pond shouldn't even be part of the CIR application. And staff agrees with us that pumping it to irrigate another part of the cemetery is a violation. So, that's one of the design requirements that should result in a reversal of the hearings official's decision. The other one is the ingress and egress. And Public Works said that that requirement was safe and usable, public ingress and egress was not met, for all the reasons that they had put forth, and I have them in my papers, that the road is not feasible. They haven't shown that they can really produce it. Also, that the project is, the whole application is vague. Gabe Flock mentioned that there's a maximum amount of flexibility, there's a maximum amount of time, there's a maximum amount of vagueness. There's a condition that says nothing is binding, everything can be changed. The applicant can do, can make any changes to the development in the future. The hearing was supposed to give us, as neighbors, the right to comment and see that the development would be a proper development meeting. would be a proper development, meeting all the code requirements. If everything can change in the future, the hearing is meaningless and it's a procedural violation if that happens. I also'd like to comment that typically, the configuration of a project is limited to the land that the applicant has said is available. So in this case, it would be the Yucca. However, the cemetery is owned by the same, by one person. This 15 acres and another 60 acres, or 650, whatever, is owned by the same person. He said at the hearing that he was going to shrink, move to shrink the footprint so that he could free up another 30 acres, he could free up this area and free up another 30 acres to do low-income, I assume, single-family housing. There's no reason, when he frees up that land, that he couldn't use some of it to meet some of the problems that he's talking about, that he can't meet with this configuration. The blocks that he's talking about, he could reconfigure this using some of that land if he really wants to provide low-income housing. He could move the property north and provide a buffer for people. And that's one of the biggest concern of a lot of the people. One family that, a co-appellant, will have trash collection and parking within five feet of their backyard under this new proposal. So I don't see why they could not use some other part of the land they own to make the project viable, if they really want to make it viable, if it were to be denied and they have to submit a new application. I'd also like to mention that we've heard a lot about the need for low-income housing and the applicant's concern about it. They have waited 14 years since they applied to build this low-income housing, to do anything. And the only reason they did something now was because the law changed and they were afraid they'd lose, quote, "their holding place." They've also asked that, for tax benefits, that the project go forward in four phases, that each phase has seven years for a permit to be acquired, then construction, then another seven years. So there's 28 years that can be wasted in terms of providing new, new low-income housing before all the phases get done, plus the construction, with however many years each phase takes. It could be 40 or 50 years from the time they applied before this housing that they say is so needed will be constructed. They also said, and I think to me this was the most upsetting of the requirements about this, they got permission, and it's in one of the conditions of approval, that if they change their minds about using this property for low-income housing, they can apply for a new conditional use permit for some other need or some other purpose. So, true, there's a need for low-income housing. I have no question about it. The city needs low-income housing, but it needs it in a project that meets compliance with the code. And it also needs it with a project that'll get done. I think there may be one, I was talking to people, people were talking. Well, one thing, I'm not going to address the goalpost rule. I'm relying on the city's expertise on that. But I, it's, I guess I'd use the word ironic, that the applicant wants all of the rules and standards that were in place in 2002 to apply, except the underlying CUP, which denied him the right to use, to put in low-income housing. That can be a future standard or a future document that will come into effect. I don't know if technically it comes into the goalpost rule, but it's just kind of this flip of, I'll take this and I'll, I won't take that. He's saying, true, Lubbock denied me the right to develop housing, but I'm going forward and I'll get a new CUP to do it. If he goes forward with a new CUP for the underlying, he should go forward with a new CIR application at the same time. It would benefit the neighbors and it would benefit the community. The community since then, the city council and perhaps you folks who are involved with any of the city codes, has decided that the creek needs to be protected and that stormwater facilities need to be upgraded. Those all came into effect afterwards. If they had to apply again, which I'm saying they should because they haven't complied with the code, all those protections that the city thinks is necessary would come into play. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Borowski.
So, in reading your brief that you put forward, you mentioned the idea about prior commitments as one of your big things, that he has to, they have to commit to it and they can't commit to it until they've been approved, kind of what you were just saying.
They have the underlying CUP.
Right. But the hearings official, in his analysis, said that public facilities, in order to trigger the prior commitment part that you're looking for, it says that public facilities and services are not available to the site. But the hearings official said that public services are available to the site. It doesn't say that it has to be adequate. It just says it has to be available to the site, and that comes from the Woodfield Village case.
Well, it's...
So, I guess my question is, is what makes you feel that we go into the subsections of that, of that criteria, as opposed to the hearings official?
First, our first position is that the hearings official was in error regarding wastewater facility. He lumped all the public facilities together and said that the opponents were opposing it on adequacy grounds. But it's clear, if you read Public Works and in our submissions to the hearings official, that wastewater is not available. It's not a question of it being inadequate at 40th and Willamette, it's unavailable. The second thing is that there is no public street within the development. It runs the equivalent of maybe three city blocks, and there's no street. And there's no stormwater facilities. So there's no public street, no public stormwater facilities within the site. Therefore, that's why Public Works got into the issue in saying, the road does not meet, is not sufficient, and the waste, and the stormwater is not sufficient because he has to provide them as private facilities, because they're not available publicly. Does that...
Yeah, that helps me get to your things.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next up is David Berg, followed by Greg Claba.
Hi, I pass.
David passes. Greg passes. Ingrid Went, followed by Tamara Horadzki.
Well, I, like the others, I very much appreciate all of the hard work that all of you put in unpaid. And I know that you have the best interests of everyone in mind. So thank you for listening to everyone's testimony with such patience and interest. My name is Ingrid Went. I am one of the neighborhood co-applicants of the appeal in opposition to the hearing official's decision. My address is 35 Westbrook Way. This is in the Edgewood Townhouses, which is one block to the west of Brabird. And the Edgewood Townhouses, as folks may know, consist of 89 units. I would say most of them are owned and occupied by residents of retirement age or close to it. I used to live personally up on College Hill. And my husband and I, like many people, downsized. We live more modestly than we used to. We live in two very small bedroom unit. And I feel very privileged to be living there. I am privileged and proud also to be on the same program tonight with, and sharing the microphone with so many fine people, including Sid Lichen. We met for the first time outside the Oregon State Legislature on the day that he was receiving an honor on behalf of his family, and I was receiving the honor of being invited to open the session of the state legislature that day with a poem. I'm a writer. I'm also pleased to hear what Mary says about the brains in this room. There certainly are some very fine brains in this room, and I do agree that there must be a way to resolve some of these issues. Tonight, I heard for the first time that the possibility of opening up part of the cemetery for more development, more housing, and that gives me some hope, actually, in a different regard, because anyone who knows that area knows that the fire danger in the South Hills is significant. And I was looking at this map tonight and thinking, oh my goodness, there'd be this one road from Willamette all the way up through this area with no cross streets in it? Maybe there are good reasons to have cross streets when you have long, narrow roads winding in a very hilly, forested, or grassland area that is prone to fire. I submitted oral testimony at the evidentiary hearing stage, and I submitted that testimony in writing on July 8th, so you probably have that. I want to add one more thing, however, because in adding to what Marilyn Cohen said, I don't think that there is anyone in this room who has any quarrel with the quality of the housing being proposed, or the quality of the people who will live there. The neighborhood that I'm a part of and proud to be part of is not a neighborhood that is concerned for having a different level of resident among us, or residents among us. In fact, I support what Mary said. It'd be great to have some other kinds of low-income people mixed in with very low, medium-income people, and some retired people, and some family people. I don't think we have in our neighborhood the kind of very expensive houses and housing and neighborhood association that was opposing the building of the low-income housing out Coburg Road, for example. I was following that with great interest. In fact, one of the people who has profited from that low-income housing is a woman that I've gotten to know quite well over the past year. She's a caregiver for my husband, a part-time caregiver. And the rest of her time, she works in, is a checker in a box store here in Eugene. And she told me that she got up at 4:00 in the morning, I recognize the need for low-income housing here. She was on that list and she got up at 4:00 in the morning so she could stand in line to be available on the day that those units were given out to the low-income people who had applied for it. There were many more, as we know, applied than received the housing. So I'm very sympathetic, and I know that good people deserve these houses, and there's a real need, and I know that. And I, I am happy also to hear tonight of two new low-housing areas in South Eugene that I didn't know existed. So the argument that there is no, or very little, low-income housing in South Eugene just got a new dimension to it for me. I think there is some. My argument originally was to address the area that's affected by this development, namely, the environment. Someone said this evening that we can hardly afford to cut any more trees. I couldn't be more in agreement. But it's the creek that I'm most concerned with, the Brabird Creek. The open stream, which is what the applicant calls it, the open stream, sometimes called a ditch, he calls it that, he intends to pipe this for water for his cemetery. The ditch, the open stream, is called Brabird Creek. It also goes by the name Brabird Reparion in the Goal V Water Resources Conservation Plan, Section 4, Map 9. According to the map on page 17, the area of the creek which the applicant intends to pipe is, quote, "upland wildlife habitat designated for protection," unquote. As I understand it, this is a legal requirement, and this relevant section of the creek is protected by Eugene's Water Resources Conservation Plan. And any piping of this stream or tunneling under it is prohibited. So we're getting into this goalpost rule that I've been hearing so much about tonight. And I want to say one more thing about that in conclusion. The applicant says that the only water resource regulation standards that should apply to his plans to pipe the Brabird Creek and to tunnel under it for the stormwater are those regulations that were in existence in 2002. He says that since the water resources regulations created afterwards do not apply, he doesn't need to change his plans. I recognize that the city will be arguing that the regulations do indeed apply, and I want to support the city in this position. I say that any new regulations were created to rectify and amend any parts of those 2002 regulations that needed to be altered. It was good sense to change those and to add to them and to make additions to the 2002 regulations because they were deemed necessary. Protecting the creek is of the utmost importance for a number of reasons. Environmentally speaking, the area on either side of the creek is natural woods, virgin timber, never-cut woods of cedar, vine maple, Douglas fir, elderberry, Oregon grape, a host of mosses and ferns, and many, many more living things. Among the resident wildlife dependent on the creek's waters are deer, raccoons, squirrels, possums, Oregon junkos, spotted tohes, flickers, and more. Someone said tonight, we can't stop the clock. I was taking notes, I'm a poet. But we can't, and we can't stop global warming. But we don't have to cut down the trees we have left. We can do what we can. There's another consideration. Whatever happens to the upper creek, the part the applicant plans to drain, happens also to the lower section of the creek that flows through the properties where I live. The lower section of the creek is affected by the upper section. That lower section flows from the south of Brabird through the woods to Willamette Street, where it's piped underground to the Amazon Canal. The domino effect of piping water out of, and I should say the negative domino effect of piping water out of the upper creek would negatively affect this entire waterway. The lower creek is divided into two parts, the part that flows from Brabird to Brookside Drive, and the part that emerges from under Brookside to ride, to run through the Edgewood Townhouse complex where I live. The upper part of the creek between Brabird and Brookside hosts a profusion of wildflowers that have been here for centuries, fawn lilies, camus lilies, trillium, shooting stars, and many more. many more. There is another water issue that I haven't heard anyone talk about tonight, except just sort of obliquely, which is the damage that could be done to foundations, to slippage of houses and so forth by having an inadequate stormwater runoff. The houses in the Brayburn, in the Edgewood Townhouses, several of those, a number of years ago, had foundation slippage because of floods coming down the creek. Without adequate stormwater protection and without adequate stormwater runoff, we're going to have more problems with erosion and water coming down to that creek and the creek rising. So, there's, there are parallel dual problems here. I'm not sure that's coming through clearly. I'm not sure I'm making sense. Other Edgewood neighbors are addressing and have addressed the situation in their own testimonies. I mentioned the flooding possibility to make clear that this is a separate problem, relevant to a separate part of the creek, not to be confused with the other concern, which I share with my neighbors, that the upper creek should not be drained for resources to water the other part of the cemetery, for water for the other part of the cemetery. So, I guess I'm going to conclude with addressing what I've heard tonight as this goalpost issue. I need help with this here because my understanding is that new rules and regulations are put in place for a good reason, just like amendments to the Constitution were put in place for a good reason. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to understand here, would it be possible for someone to say they're not going to abide by the amendments of the Constitution because they started something in motion years before that amendment was written? So, the amendment can be tossed out? I'm trying to get it here. That's, that's my question to all of you. Are we going to listen to the amendments, the new regulations put into place here governing the land, the land use and the use of the creek and protecting the creek? Or are we going to say that the 2002 regulations are allowed to stand? So, that's my argument. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, Michael Smith.
No, he called my name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tamara, Tamara. I apologize.
Tamara Hurdiski, 27, Westbrook Way. You know, some of the speakers in favor of this project said that all the excuses the neighbors make are just excuses, that the real reason that we don't want this project is that we're against low-income housing. Well, I can tell you that for the first 10 years of my life, I was either homeless or lower than low-income. I was this displaced person, a refugee from Europe during the war. I know what poverty's like. I am fully in favor of low-income, or actually, this isn't even low-income because it's $40,000 to $60,000, which sounds very high to me. I really am against the location of this. If you look at that picture up there, all that white, which is where they're planning to put the housing, that's actually the only big stretch of trees left on the entire cemetery site. Because in 2006 and thereabouts, Rest Haven cut down 3,000 to 4,000 trees in order to expand the cemetery space, and all they left was that area because of Rule 17 of their CUP that required them to have a 75-foot buffer to the houses. So, basically, this is extremely, extremely steep, this area. This is going to be bulldozed, cut and filled. Not a tree is going to be left. And I would guess there's at least 1,000 trees left in this area that are going to be bulldozed away. If you took this project and you shifted it to where all that open space is, I don't think there'd be a single neighbor talking against this. It's the location, location, location. I believe the hearing officer missed a number of important issues, some of which were addressed by Marilyn Cohen. And, for example, the steepness of the street. The hearing officer said, "Well, you can work that out." Well, as Marilyn said, "No, you've got to have that in place before you get permission to build." The hearing officer said it would be adequate for the developer to put in a sidewalk along Willamette Street to the nearest transit stop, which would be at 40th and Willamette. But the elementary school is at 46th and past Donald Street. A child would have to either walk along the curb or in the dirt to 46th Street to cross at the traffic light or else go all the way around on 40th to get to the, to the elementary school. I mean, to me, that was a major error. There should have been requirement to put in sidewalk all along Willamette Street from their property line, which is at St. Jude's Church, all the way to 39th Avenue. Next item, I believe, that was wrong is the culverting of the creek. Now, if you look at that picture, that diagonal line in the upper right-hand corner is where they're planning to put the culvert. Their property is square. However, you can see Brayburn Drive just above that, almost at the top of the picture. And that's where the culvert ends. The creek over there is culverted only to pass under the streets. So, it's probably 75, 100 feet to the culvert on, we'll call it, the upper end of that picture, and at least 200 feet to the culvert where the creek crosses Brayburn again. So, basically, the hearing officer gave them permission to culvert on what is Edgewood West homeowners' property and all this to put sanitary sewer in. As soon as you culvert a creek or any waterway, you speed up the flow of water in it because you remove the dirt that slows it down, you remove the vegetation, the rocks. So, it's really going to speed up the flow of water, which will cause erosion problems for us folks that are downstream of it, unless, in fact, that the developer is successful in pumping water out of the creek. I haven't figured out which they want to do. Do they want to just culvert the creek? Because there's this phrase about he wants, he's getting the right to pump all surface water into a reservoir to water the cemetery. That brings me to another problem. There is no pump made in the world that is 100% perfect. And you know when it's going to fail? In the biggest rainstorm of the year. And where is that water going to go from this 172 units? It's going to go into the backyards of the folks, call it in the up-and-down part. I hate this map because it's, north is that way. It's extremely steep, so any drainage that comes from this that is not property, properly put into storm pipes is going to end up in people's backyards. When they cut those 3,000 or 4,000 trees 10 years back, there were neighbors who had to put in French drains and retaining walls because they were already getting runoff for the difference in cutting down all those trees. And now, all the trees are going to be gone. You can be sure of that. So, and what would happen if their pump fails? Pump fails, power fails, where is that water going to go? It's going to rush into people's backyards and into, sudden gush, into the creek, creating problems for us who are downstream. Yesterday's paper had an article about somebody who went around town measuring temperatures throughout town. And there was just one comment about, something about the temperatures were much higher than they were in the South Hills. So, think about what cutting another 1,000 trees will do to the temperatures here and what it will do to the wildlife. Ingrid mentioned, she forgot, all the turkeys and the quail and the woodpeckers that we have here. Move it over, we'll jump with you.
And then finally, Michael Smith.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing my questions. So, at the top of the map, I think that the exit goes out and then onto Brayburn. Is that going to be a road that exits the housing development onto Brayburn? And then if they go out on Brayburn, I live on Deer Trail, which is up and around the corner, which eventually feeds into West 36th Avenue, which goes over to Crest Elementary, which goes over to, over to West Eugene. And I know there's a lot, if you put 172 homes in that area, there's going to be a lot of traffic going down West 36th Street, which is about as wide as U-Commissioner's right there. And you have to stop and let one car go by to let everyone go through. And I know that if there's people in this area who are going to go out to West Eugene, they're going to go right in front of my home, and they're going to go right down West 36th Avenue, out onto Crest Drive, over to Chambers, over the top, and drop down by Martin 18th. And that's a big concern of mine because I have, you know, my kids are bigger now, but my neighbors have small kids. And having the excess traffic flowing in front of my home is concerning to me. So, I would hope that somebody would look into that and solve that problem. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, unless we've missed someone, then that is the end of the testimony. And before we have staff, if you have any comments or response at this time, can I have Rick Satri, the applicant, can you come up here really quickly? It's very hard. And can you point out, I think it will help the commissioners, explain the connection that the last gentleman was talking about? How does that connect as well as the piping? Where does it start and where does it end?
Well, the proposal, if everyone can hear, the proposal is that there's a drive aisle.
Kristin? Yes. Can you have her? He needs to be talking. He needs to be talking. So, can you take that?
Thank you.
Just so that, and just have your finger. It would be great if you had a laser pointer.
Does anybody have a pointer? My finger, I don't know. Well, the proposal includes a private drive aisle. Main entrance, or the eastern entrance is on Willamette Street.
Can you, oh, he's got it.
He's got the pointer.
Oh, great. That's what we needed.
Oh, technology. How do you work this thing? There it is.
Thank you. That's exactly.
Thanks, Gabe. So, a drive aisle, one entrance on Willamette Street, a drive aisle follows the topography. The exit on the west end is, there's currently a semi-improved, what technically is considered an unimproved stub of 40th there on the west end. And the drive aisle will connect to that stub. In fact, the hearings official, one of the conditions is that that unimproved stub there of 40th will be improved as a part of the project.
And the piping, the extent of the piping, the other concern?
Then of the piping, there's, there's two issues, and some of the statements and facts are getting a little bit intertwined where perhaps they shouldn't. Part of that is that there's a requirement for sanitary sewer facilities. That happens to be where it's available. And part of it is managing onsite stormwater. Now, the bigger answer to the question or to the concern that's been expressed this evening is, the hearings official indicated in the decision that utilities will be subject to standards, design and engineering standards. It's not in the land use code, but they'll be designed and built, you know, to Pepe standards when they're the public facilities. So, exactly where the pipe is and exactly what size it is and exactly where the crossings are are going to be part of that engineering process that will happen when there's a specific development proposal for one of the phases.
Commissioner Baker.
The line, the pipe, the creek, Paulson?
That white line is approximately where there would be a pipe installed, yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I was just asking if you could point out where the creek was planned to be placed below grade.
Piped.
You've got a sanitary sewer line. You can see on the map, the S, sanitary sewer line. Connections from the sanitary sewer up the hill to the dwelling unit.
Do you mind? Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, commissioners. My name's Tim Wyper. I'm the applicant. I've been there for 35 years. Rick's only been on this project a couple of years, and he's never been in the creek. So, if I could assist with questions, I would be happy to do that. In general, the questions about piping the creek have multiple issues that are behind them. I believe that the hearings officer took all of those issues in, and in your 1,000-page document, you'll be able to see some of that. But one of the issues is, is that people should understand right off the bat, is there's a 20-foot sewer easement through the property where that white area is. It, it carries a sewer line presently. That's a public works. It's, it's, it's your property. It's everybody's property. At any time, if there's any maintenance or failure there, that area would be disturbed. Everything that's white on the map, no matter where it is, be it the creek or anywhere else on that map, is showing disturbed property in this whole process. If approval is granted and project is built, all of those white areas will have to be disturbed. Specifically, back to the creek, one of the main reasons to pipe the creek is to make sure that any project that we do does not increase the water that flows from the west side to the east side so that nobody downstream is getting additional water from us. So, that's one of the critical issues that gets missed. So, you know, that's one of the processes that we have to try to do. It also is where the sewer is, so we do have to go there for some of this development. There's no choice or the project is killed. So, a lot of that was in-depth discussed at the hearings officer's level, and the hearings officer, I believe, made the proper decision. As far as going beyond that, this is a land use request. All permits, be it through public works or Pepe plans or development plans, will have to come from those at that level and will meet the standards that need to be met at that time. Currently, we're trying to get a footprint that will allow for 172 units, and this is the footprint. It can't be moved because it's Zone 6. And so, the rest of the property's not Zone 6. But that's, I'm just trying to help on the, on the pipe.
I think a lot of this, like you said, a lot of the evidence is already in the record. I just wanted us to have Rick and you, thank you for your help, step us through the actual document and the site plan. So, there is staff, if you have any additional comments or response at this time.
Thank you, Chair Taylor. We do not have any additional comment at this time.
Okay. And any commissioners have questions for staff or anybody from the public? Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused on this issue of staff.
In the microphone?
I'm confused of this issue with staff because I thought that we can ask questions of staff after the final rebuttal and even after the close of the hearing so that we can talk about what we might need for deliberation.
I see it in essentially two categories of questions that are appropriate. One would be questions of staff that would enable the applicant to respond as part of the rebuttal. There may also be questions that assist staff and the commission to prepare us for deliberations. So, those questions... So those questions, for example, information you might like to have from the record, or would help to lead us into the deliberations on Thursday, would be appropriate following the applicant's final rebuttal. But the purpose of having an opportunity for questions before rebuttal is so that the applicant can respond if necessary.
Okay. Chair, I do have questions then?
I will too.
Yeah, I usually remember that being at the end, so that's why I was confused on that issue. I have free questions, I believe. There's been a lot in the testimony that talks about, specifically on page 53 of the handout, that things that might hinder this development or term "kill it." I know that, the other question will also help why I have this question. I know that in a lot of PUD applications and other types of things, there's always an opportunity to request exemptions. So what I'm asking here is, during deliberations, if staff could respond to the specific things that are in there that might cause this to be killed or not, are any of them subject to possible exemptions by the applicant at a later date? That would be the first question.
We can certainly respond to that with a little more detail. I'll look through the various standards. I think the multifamily standards are one that's raised, Goal 5 and others. And we'll be prepared to respond to that in terms of adjustments or exceptions, allowances, whatever, that might be possible.
Okay, I just want to know what's fixed and what could be changed. Second question is, in the testimony and in the record, staff gave its reports, and we've heard reference to the Public Works Department. Public Works Department may have looked at this differently than staff did. And so from that perspective, I would like staff, when we do have our deliberations, to sort of indicate what in the public works criteria, when they said specific things, are maybe a little more or a little less than what the actual requirements were from the understanding of the planning staff itself that looks at these regulations.
Okay.
Okay. Third question, I've been still trying to get a handle, because people have said opportunities for public comment and all of this. I'm really clear, when people submit a PUD, when you look at a planned unit development, everybody gets a chance to look at it and comment. It normally has a lot of specifics. It'll have, what are the open spaces, what's their plantings, where's their trees, the roads, the sidewalks, and all of this. I see this CR, and I don't understand, does this mean that what we're seeing here is all that people will see? Or does this come back later, like a PUD, where they can have more specifics and be able to comment on that?
To be clear, the conditionally used permit process does not have a second step as compared to a planned unit development. A PUD would, under current code, would involve a second step that involves a land use decision that has public notice, opportunity for appeal. And the criteria would be determining whether it's in compliance with the tentative approval and the conditions. But in the case of a conditionally used permit, the answer to your question is no. It won't come back for a public review based on the old code procedures. This site plan and the conditions of approval are what you get in terms, in the event that the hearings official's decision is affirmed.
I, I'll go back and look at the regulations at that time. I can't believe that regulations only that much time back did not talk about more specifics when you said what you're going to be building there. So I am still confused with this. Because I can understand if they want to have a land use change and say, we want to do this on it, fine, but then let's later see what you want to do on it, not look at this. I'm unclear with what I see here as any opportunity for public involvement and comment on what's going to be done, and that's just a comment.
Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, this would be a question for the city attorney, so that the applicant can have response to it. In reading your memorandum of the June 29th, basically citing the goalpost issue, is there anything that you would like to expound on that for us as commissioners? Or would you like us just to take what you have here and use that as the basis for enacting the goalpost issue?
So, trying to find that June 29th memo.
It was the last two pages of the packet.
Yeah, so I'm not going to expound in detail on this. I think during deliberations, we're going to have to have some discussions, and I'd be answering whatever questions you have about the different legal analysis that's been presented to you on the goalpost rule. What I do want to point out, though, on this memo, and kind of explain the context, the hearings officer has decided, you know, he's punted basically the goalpost issue. And so, just to be clear, you know, the city staff would have loved to have gotten a decision from the hearings officer on that issue. In this memo, I basically, you know, I said, it's pretty likely that the hearings officer will have to address that issue. I didn't say the hearings officer should, or could, or must, or anything like that. So I just want to be clear that the hearings officer did not do that. I didn't specifically, you know, form an opinion that the hearings officer should. The reason I got into all the goalpost analysis was in the event that the hearings officer did reach it. So we'll, the first thing we're going to be talking about on Monday is, can you reach it? So with that, all the details of the analysis of the goalpost rule, I'll be ready to answer any questions you have. It's very complicated. It's clear that reasonable minds can differ on what the analysis is. The cases are kind of all over the place. But I spent quite a bit of time looking at the cases and kind of putting them all together to come up with the analysis that the city attorney's office is very comfortable with, with regard to that. And we can get into that in detail on Thursday. I hope that gives enough for the applicant to respond in rebuttal on. But pretty much, you know, the analysis is in all the written documents already, so.
Okay.
Unless you have any other questions?
Well, I will have questions that will, that I'll want answered for deliberations, but not necessarily. I just wanted to know if you wanted to respond more to this for the applicant to respond to.
About this time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Commissioner Baker?
Just a quick question. I was wondering if, when you looked at the comments by Commissioner Jaworski, when you looked at those areas that might have an effect, if you would also note changes that might actually increase the costs? For example, parking standards that were.
I would just offer an opinion about that, that cost issues are really not relevant in the context of the criteria. And I would caution the commission about containing the discussion to the record.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, just follow-up for the deliberations. I think it was Rick Satri had mentioned that there was indication that certain development standards would be applied at a later date. And I just want some clarification, if there's specific code language that looks at the land use code, and certain criteria can be applied at the permit stage. And my second question has to do with current standards such as Goal 5, and water resources, if there are conflicting legal issues in, for instance, if we uphold the position of the applicant, are there conflicting legal issues in terms of water quality, et cetera, based on the adoption of some of the current standards?
And we can follow up on that Thursday.
Thank you. And are there any other questions, comments? I did want to, I saw Marilyn's hand go up, and I realized I kind of created a little bit of chaos. So Marilyn, if you want to step up to the podium and just respond.
I was just going to explain the pipe and where the borders of it would be. The applicant said at one point in his memorandum that the pipe is, or that the creek is piped at the property line. It isn't. If you look at the white diagonal line, and if you look at the road, if you start in the right top corner, you'll see a road going down, and it goes almost to the left and it keeps going down. That's Brayburn, and that's where the culverts are. The space between the horizontal line of the pipe and Brayburn on either side is not piped. It's only piped, the culverts under Brayburn. And I think that was your question when you were looking at the site plan. Where does the pipe start and stop?
Yes, thank you for the clarification. And now, applicant, would you like to provide a final rebuttal?
Yes, let's get organized. Chair Taylor, member of the Planning Commission. My name's Aaron Opum for the applicant. I've been selected to briefly go over the goalpost issues. And I realize that we've been here for quite a while tonight, so I do want to be brief. And I think what may be most beneficial with our time is to point you to where in the material the information is that you're looking for that'll help you answer these questions. And there are some tools that we've provided for you, and they are found in the Planning Commission packet. And I'd just like to point out where they are. So the first thing I'd direct you to is our July 8th, 2016 letter from Attorney Michael Reader that specifically addresses all of the cases that are mentioned in the city attorney's memo. And it goes into great depth. And when I mean to say great depth, 17 pages, because the devil's in the detail in those cases. And so I think if you read those, they're going to answer your questions about those specific cases. Our July 22nd final argument, that's found in your packet at page 50, and I'm sorry, the other is found starting at page 34. That also goes into it in a bit more detail. And then finally, the information that Mr. Satri handed to you tonight, which are draft findings of fact and conclusions of law. And that will also address the goalpost rule. And we've actually tried to do the heavy lifting for the city attorney. So should you side with us, her job becomes very easy then, because we've helped her out. And also in that too, I would point out that the city attorney raised the question about whether or not you, or the city, I'm sorry, the hearings officer should have or has the authority to address these issues. That's also in the draft findings and conclusions of law. So I'd point you to look there. Some of the things I point out, and Commissioner Baker, you know, you had some questions about how the new code might impose constraints that would kill this project. There's another way that this project that could be killed that we have great concern about, and that's why you see so many folks here from our side, and why we took the unusual step of appealing our own approval. And it's the notion that, you know, these are probably some of the thinnest sets of approval criteria you'll ever see for a CUP. There's only about five criteria. And sure enough, we have five assignments of error. So if we add on everything that's been adopted since 2002, and we specifically filed to avoid that, every standard and criteria is another point of contention for somebody who's opposed to this project. It's another chance that could potentially send us up to Luba or some other body, and time kills all deals. So that's the other way that this has the potential to kill this deal. And when you add those levels of new criteria, new standards, those are the kinds of things that drive away developers. I think, you know, one of the concerns I had is that, in my mind, I think the city attorney's memo creates more questions than it answers. And I think there's even some disagreement on the table over there as to exactly what would happen. I heard Gabe say that there is no second step. And the city attorney's memorandum talks about a two-step approval process. And so I think Gabe is correct, there is no second step under the code. We're not required to come back with some second distinct application such as site review. So when we go in for building permits, who gets to decide what's a development standard? Do only objective development standards apply? Do discretionary development standards apply? Do the neighbors get notice? What type of application is required? What type of proceeding is it going to take? Is it going to be a Type 1, a Type 2? What are the appeal rights? Who hears the appeal? Does 120-day clock apply? How does that work with EC 9.274? Would we apply another that said that are, these are the exclusive standards? What's a denial? Who gets to decide what a denial is? Does it have to deny the entire project? What if it just denies one unit? Does it have to deny 51% of the units? What if it doesn't deny anything, but it increases the cost by $1 million to comply with it, with increases by $100,000? You know, those are all issues that, that's the rabbit hole that we'd be going down in adopting the city attorney's position on the goalpost rule. And that's what we're asking you to make the policy decision to avoid. And I heard the city attorney say that reasonable minds can differ. And I think that's what we have here, is we have a difference of legal opinion as to how the goalpost rule applies. I'd say that the city attorney believes that the goalpost rule applies narrowly, and that the cases interpreting it are narrow. And it's our opinion that it was intended to apply broadly, and that the cases that apply it also apply it broadly. So in that scenario, you have the ability to decide who's right. And the city attorney works for you. If you direct the city attorney to draft findings and conclusions of law to support our appeal, she will do that. So you have this unique opportunity that, you know, they don't come along that often, where you get to actually do something that will substantively make a positive difference to real people and people in our community. And that's to say, yes, we do want 172 units of affordable housing in South Eugene. Now, city attorney, would you kindly draft the findings and conclusions of law to support that? So I think unless there's any specific questions about the goalpost rule, and frankly, I would tell you that there's a lot of cases, there's a lot of facts relying out there. When we wrote those, that memo, we were looking right at that case, making sure we got the facts right, got the holding right from it. And so I would defer those kind of in-depth questions to our memos that we have previously submitted or in the record. And I would say this, that really, from our position, the goalpost rule is a meaningless rule if the very types of regulations that we tried to avoid by filing early are now going to be applied, and we have to show compliance with all of them anyways. And that really makes the goalpost a meaningless statute. And there's case law here in Oregon that says that the legislature doesn't enact meaningless statutes, and courts won't interpret them to be meaningless. So that's all I have for the goalpost. Bill is going to talk a little bit, I think, in response to some of the issues that were raised by the opponents tonight. But thank you for your time.
Bill Close, cleanup hitter. I just made a short list of points that I wanted to make sure we're on the same page. Three spec two. The first, this question of, are services available? I, without getting into the nuances facility by facility, I just want you to drop back and look at this from the perspective of the crow at 500 feet. We're talking about a 75-acre site here, of which this is 15 acres, southernmost 15 acres. This site is completely surrounded by, and abutted by, existing urban development, all of which is fully served. So really, the notion that services aren't available is just hard to get your head around. The standard does not require that all services be on the site. And I think that the opponents were suggesting that was the case. The other aspect of the services argument raised by appellant Cohen really is a chicken-and-egg problem. I mean, one part of her argument is, well, you can't make a finding that services are available because this entire site is subject to a condition use permit requiring a cemetery, and that condition use permit doesn't allow services to be on the site, because it approved a certain kind of development, and the development doesn't include services that would service this 15 acres. The hearings official dealt with this. If these, we need two applications approved to do this project. One is, we have to roll back the legal footprint of the condition use permit for the cemetery that was approved in 1995. We have to roll it back so that it's no longer required. We have to roll it back so that it's no longer required to be cemetery, and it's available something else. And then we need approval of the conditional use permit for the CIR. In the normal course of events, we would have done this the other way around, we would have rolled back the cemetery condition use permit, opened up this dirt, made it unencumbered by cemetery, and then we would have come in and done the CIR for the housing. But state law prohibited that. The state law, which took effect on January 1, said, "In any of you kids out there that have a remanded decision from Luba," and we did from 2002, "y'all have to initiate further processing with 180 days, or it's dead." Salem, they call it the Lazarus statute. I mean, they don't want these old land use decisions hanging around forever. So when we got wind of that, actually criticized the City Attorney, bless her, we realized we had to move the CIR application now, or it would be dead forever. And so that's what's happened, and that's why we're here. At the same time, we started moving on filing the application to roll back the CUP for the cemetery to make room for this. But starting new applications in the City of Eugene is a lot slower than restarting a remanded decision. So that's why it's kind of being done in a backwards way. The hearings official fully understood that and conditioned the approval of the CIR and getting a separate approval after a public hearing to roll back the cemetery CUP to make room for this. And there's just nothing illegal about that. There's questions about this safe access standard for the CIR. We have in the record a letter from a professional transportation engineer, looked at the situation and said, "Access can be provided safely." Stormwater, there was conflicting arguments from the opponents about, on the one hand, they're going to steal all the water from the creek, and on the other hand, they're going to dump the stormwater in their creek, and we're all going to get flooded out. What is it? Well, it's neither. The creek is going to be piped, a section of pipe is going to be put in between the two sections of pipe, and that's going to protect the stream from any more stormwater going into it. And then the increment of stormwater that comes from development of housing on this site, and there will be an increment of stormwater, that's going to get captured and moved off-site to a reservoir in the cemetery. Makes sense. It's stormwater harvesting in the great Eugene tradition. I heard someone say that, quote, "All the trees are going to be gone." Yes, but only in the white area. What we have done here is we've squeezed the development as far as possible to the north, up on the top of the hill, and we've said, "In that area, it's going to be disturbed. Assume the trees are going to be gone. Everything else adjacent to the south, all the way down to the property line, no touch the trees. No touch the trees." And the condition of approval requires that the trees right along that boundary line, the south boundary line, be surveyed. And they're all going to get individual names and numbers, such that when the actual development happens, people can keep very close track of the interface between the tree removal zone, the tree disturbance zone, and the no-touch zone. I agree that there, when you look at the record, there's kind of conflicting comments between the planners and the public works people. I mean, it always happens in Eugene. Maybe it wouldn't happen if Eugene did what they did in Springfield, which is merge the two departments. They'd have to talk together more and coordinate better. The final comment I want to make is about the whole notion of piling on more conditions, more requirements at a later stage, which are going to increase the cost of the housing. I heard a comment, "Well, there's no problem with increasing the cost of the housing." But there is. This application was filed in 2002 under the benefit of the needed housing statute, which you've heard me talk about before. But that requires only clear and objective standards be applied, and it also prohibits conditions and standards and processes which unreasonably increase the cost of providing needed housing and unreasonably delay the provision of needed housing. And everything we're talking about here, loading on these additional standards and processes, all of those things are going to increase cost and delay the provision of housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about questions? Do I hear?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Close, we might have some questions of the applicant. Based on what I've heard, and would really help me in deliberations if you could answer this particular question, and you don't have to. I've heard a lot of testimony for the housing, the housing shortage, the need, and all of that. Probably 90% of the proponents talked about that issue. Prior to you, in the wrap-up, I heard that when he talked about the goalpost rule, that, you know, "Time kills all deals." And I heard you just say, "Unreasonable delay of providing of housing is a real critical thing." And so when I look at that, and I go, wow, we know over time costs increase, and the three things and four things that all the proponents have mentioned, I'm really confused when I look at this, because I say, if that's the case, why did you wait 13 years to submit this? My second question is, why do you put it in four phases, which are going to take 28-plus years? So we're looking at four decades where costs are rising, it's not providing in a reasonable time the housing, and I can't see how it's addressing a need that exists now, that far in the future, when it should be quicker? And that's my question.
Okay. First, with respect to phasing, and I'm repeating what I've heard our housing people say, is that these kinds of projects are typically funded for a discrete number of units that's much less than 172. So if it's a single-phase project, it's not going to be developed, because nobody's going to fund a one-shot deal of 172. Beyond that, why it's four, we have four phases? Three, three phases? You divide 172 by three, and you get a little less number of units than the maximum that these people like to fund. I mean, our housing people can discuss that more if you want. Sure, Richie?
If you look at the low-income housing projects that have been built in the community over the last 15, 20 years, you've rarely seen one that's bigger than 60 units. You just can't get the funding package together for anything bigger than that. It just never...
I understand that, but I don't remember in the record it being sent that you were looking for, let's say, state-support funding for this, to do this. So that's a first, that I understand that. Thank you, I understand that component.
It's just a complex thing, and you never get that many units at a time.
You got that, so it could take three years?
It could take a little bit.
All right.
Why pressing this project now rather than 14 years ago? Because if we really wanted to reduce the cost, we would have delivered the least-cost product. We would have done it 14 years ago. There is a memo in the file, which goes back to 1995, which was the date of the initial condition use permit for the entire 75-acre site. And then that memo comes forward in time and lists each discrete land use decision that was made related to the site, and appeals of that decision to present. And, you know, you really need to sit down and put your feet up when you go through that, because it has been an absolutely horrendous, horrendous process, a bad relationship with the City of Eugene. A lot of applications were filed and denied and appealed. I mean, we started with an application in 2002, and the city received it, told us what six things were needed to make it complete. We gave them the six things, and then they said, "Hmm, we don't like this. We're not going to process it." I mean, welcome to Eugene. We had to go to Luba to force the city to just process the thing. And we won. And it's not like it was a hard appeal. Luba said, "We've told you people, you have to process these things." So it has not been a good relationship. And then you look at all the probably 12 or 15 decisions in the subsequent, not 10 or 12, in the subsequent years, and it's really been a mess. Most recently, the applicant went to the city and got the entire balance of this site re-planned designation as low-dense residential. For the longest time, this site, particularly this end of the site, was zoned, single-family residence, R1. But it was planned-designated parks and open space. Now, think about that. You know, I mean, probably 50 acres of this was planned-designated parks and open space. What do you do with 50 acres of parks and open space planned-designated land that's zoned residential? Not much. This application was filed because CIR housing was the only kind of housing you could develop when your property had R1 zoning and parks and open space planned designation, strictly by historic accident. That's why it got filed. And it had to be filed when it was filed, because the standards were going to change imminently, which they did. So I think if you put your feet up and read that memo, and you see all the decisions coming forward in time, you'll realize this has been a really horrendous project. And, you know, to be totally honest, this application wouldn't be filed right now if it didn't have to be filed. The applicant would have done the other way around, before pressing this CIR application forward, taking it off the back burner. The applicant would have gone in and had the condition use permit rolled back.
You said that in your testimony, and I was wondering, even though you said all these other things happened, why that couldn't have been done in that 12-year period or 13-year period? Why that part of rollback couldn't have been done?
Well, it's interesting. You know, we did file a discrete application to roll back the CUP. It's in the list of bad decisions. We filed a discrete application to roll back the condition use permit to open up just Zone 6, which is the precise footprint of the CIR project. And if, I hope I get this correct, the planning staff supported that application, and the hearings official, I'm trying to, actually, what happened, I'm getting a little confused here about the, we lost at Luba on that. I think the hearings official denied that, and we appealed to Luba, and Luba affirmed the denial. The problem was that we were trying to make room for this project, and at Luba, the hearings official said, and Luba affirmed, that the CIR project had a sanitary sewer pipe that went off of Zone 6 diagonally northeast and to hit that line in Willamette Street. And the hearings official said, "No, no, you can't do that, because there you've got a sewer line from the housing project that's going off Zone 6 onto the cemetery site." So, I mean, it's been a real struggle. I'm not sure I answered your question directly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add on that?
Thank you. So, thank you all for your participation. I'd also like to remind everyone that we will be meeting again Thursday, August 25, from 11:30 to 2:30, here in Harris Hall. And that's the first deliberations. And if there's a need for a second one, that meeting will be next Monday in the slot room in the atrium building on 99 West 10th Avenue, starting at 11:30. And the goal will be for us to finish our deliberations on this appeal at the latest on Monday, because of the timeline. So that is it. And with that, I'm going to close.
Okay, but we're still going to have more questions for staff after, about our deliberations.
Can I?
If you have them, we'd love to hear them.
You can close the hearing.
Close the hearing, okay.
But it's not quite over yet.
This is my first time as chair, so got to make sure I'm doing it correctly. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing now.
So, thank you. So first off, I want to thank everybody for coming out and spending three hours here. And just let you all know that, or at least for me, I understand that this is a complicated issue. There's a lot of information for us to digest and try and come to our best case scenario for this decision. Like was stated earlier, we're unpaid volunteers. We're not lawyers. You know, I'm a cook. And so we're digging in, and we're reading briefs, and we're reading decisions from Luba, and we're asked to do a lot of things that are, quite frankly, above our pay grade. So we'll do our best that we can do. But again, thank you for coming out. As far as questions for deliberation for staff, for me, outside of the public hearing, I was very interested in the memo that was mentioned from Mr. Reader about the goalpost issue. And the one that stuck out for me was on page 38, State versus, how are we going to say it? Gagne?
Gagne.
Okay. And the following, or the, on the next page about the, about using the legislative history as the main reason, you know, when you're going through, you look at the legislative history, and kind of, that's the top thing that you look at to decide what was meant. And then you kind of go down, start drilling down into other case histories and stuff like that. So I'm going to be looking at that and hopefully getting some advice from our counsel on that. And then the next question I had is a procedural one, and that has to go to the fact that this deliberations will be taking place with four members. And I'm wondering what would be the outcome if it were a 2 to 2 tie? Would that be an affirm, or would that be a denial?
I can answer that now. And based on the old code procedures, well, actually, they're consistent current code or old code, a tie would result in affirming the hearings official's decision.
Okay. And then the third question that I have is, normally, on the appeals that I've sat in on, it's very cut and dry. It's legal, it's not legal. It, you know, the hearing official erred or not erred. In this case, we've been asked, both by the applicant and what's in the record, to make somewhat of policy jumps. And I'm wondering, when we have our deliberation, if you could talk to that and the applicability, I don't know if that's the right word, but of the use of our bylaws and the sections that were cited, as to our ability to do that in a policy-type of a decision to wait, to help weight our decision in this thing. So those are some of the questions that I would hope can be, you can do some research on and have answers to us for Thursday. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes, I know that time was short, and you weren't able to prepare sort of a detailed analysis of possible responses we might have. But maybe if you could outline some of those, particularly, in particular, the hearings official had a number of conditions, quite a large number compared to what we're usually used to in these kind of appeals. And I'm wondering what, if you could sort of elaborate on what, you know, what flexibility we have in terms of changing those or, you know, affecting those decisions, or adding or removing additional ones? And just if you could at least provide some summary comments on that long list that would be helpful in our deliberations, that would be appreciated.
I have one other question, too. Gabe, you already mentioned this, we're not supposed to be dealing with costs, is what you mentioned. So if you could elaborate on that, we're just dealing with the...
Criteria.
Criteria. Just, I just want to make certain that that's the case, so, which I understand it is, but just to make it clear that that's what we should be delivering on as criteria, not on, quote, "costs" one way or the other.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I'd like a clarification on what Commissioner Borowski brought up. Did I understand that on the 25th and the 29th, three of the commissioners indicated they would be absent?
That is correct. We do have a quorum for all three meetings, including the public hearing.
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, just a question on that. Are the four of us, the three, in other words, are there other ones that are swapping in and out?
No, not to my knowledge. It's just you four.
Okay, good. I was concerned about level of tension.
Can I also ask, is there a way to bring, and you might have it here tonight, for the deliberations, the code in effect in 2002? Perfect.
Glad to.
Sure, give us 4,000 more pages to read.
It's in the record.
Okay.
Just bring it to the meeting.
Yeah, we will.
Commissioner Baker.
Again, follow-up on that. If there are particular issues that you think are important for us to pay attention to in that existing code, if you could, again, maybe just highlight, you know, list them, and, you know, so we could consider them either at Thursday meeting, or if it goes over until next week on the Monday meeting, we can at least look at those.
Sure.
Anything else? Okay, I already hit the gavel. We're already done, so goodnight.
Thank you.